And, you know, I am more qualified than anybody other than that man like you to sit on that committee. So.
Good eve- good evening, welcome to the postponed regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It's Tuesday, January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four at seven P M. We're gonna start tonight with a recognition, Chief Burnett.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to, um, do this presentation. Um, on October twenty-second of twenty-twenty-three, um, our office got dispatched to a medical call of an unresponsive subject. Uh, my officers, Officer Corey Reed and Reserve Sergeant Jason Cullum arrived on scene, saw the CPR was being, uh, performed and actually turns out to be one of our firefighters, um, Pat Fellows. With the quick thinking of his son Christian as well, um, getting involved to make sure that, uh, we could get life-saving measures to him, Officer Reed also got in there, took over CPR, utilized the A E D, they were transported to a local hospital. And of course, we're praising God that Patrick is here with us today because of his son. Because of his son, Officer Reed and, uh, Reserve Sergeant Jason Cullum. So, we'd like to recognize all three of them this evening. Um, and Mr. Mayor, can you come and be a part of that presentation? Officer Reed, Reserve Sergeant, uh, Cullum and Christian.
In appreciation for outstanding service and dedication to the citizens of Buchanan, on October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, I provide you a media life-saving medical attention to Patrick Fellows at one forty-two West Avenue, Cali Davis Street. Professionalism, courtesy, and integrity. Good job.
And Officer Reed. Actually, I would like to ask you. And again, just to thank you, uh, for the commission allowing us to, um, acknowledge our personnel when they do outstanding things in the community. Sometimes it's, we don't see that a lot, we do see a lot of the negatives, but, um, that as well as our community also being involved in helping to make a difference in saving lives. So, thank you.
Thank you. I don't know.
Hey Harvey?
We'd like.
Harvey, I, I do have a question. Isn't Kristen, aren't you one of our cadet firefighters? He is also part of our cadet firefighter program in the city of Buchanan. And, uh, this is where he's picked up those life-saving techniques that helped save his father.
Good for you, buddy.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Sorry Sean, I didn't.
No, that's fine. Thank you all. Uh, will you join me for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call, please?
Denison?
Here.
Whedon?
Here.
Jansky?
Yeah.
Money?
Present.
Clem?
Present.
Your quorum.
Thank you. Um, at this time, would someone like to make a motion to approve? Oh, we have a recommended motion, sorry. Someone would like to make that motion?
So I'll move to approve the amended agenda with the public hearing number one being postponed to February twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, and public hearing number two and item X I I dot three being postponed until the January thirty-first special public hearing and meeting.
Thank you, is there support?
I wanna, I wanna move the expenditures off the consent calendar.
Well, wait, he just made a motion.
Yeah, discussion. I'll support.
Okay, discussion, what would you like to do?
Yeah, I got several checks I wanna ask about. Um, I just want clarification on them before I authorize them, so.
When do we get to the consent agenda, we'll put that out, okay? So we have a motion and we have support? Any further discussion? We have roll call, please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Jansky?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Clem?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes. Thank you. All right. Moving down to public comment on agenda items, if you would like to make a motion on an agenda item, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes. Anyone wishing to make a public statement on an agenda item?
What a lovely way to start the meeting with the, our wonderful police, being honored, I support them greatly. And that's basically what I was thinking about. I'm Carla Jackson Johnson, and I have been thinking about wanting more positivity in, in our meetings and in our discourse and in our city. So, tonight, what I'm asking is for a hearing on this complaint. But truth is not mine to ask for and it's not yours to give. It's already here, it's done. I hold this up as a light, that's my intent, to illuminate the word of law. I've dealt with the truth as I see it, and now it's for you to see it and respond. Face the facts, accept responsibility, it's your opportunity to reflect the light of truth and to shine. Respect the self-governance, the city charter, decrees for our citizens, and you won't have to worry all the time about salvaging your name. Live up to the light of the law and do something noble and beautiful while you're in that light.
Thank you, anyone else wish to make a public comment? One's going twice. Okay? Okay, Norma.
If I can remark on that, I will. No, nothing has been done wrong. Our ladder of government here, we are first, we vote for our commissioners, then you are ahead of the manager, the employees are below the manager, you did nothing wrong by firing that employee.
Thank you, Norma. I just wanna be clear, I, I didn't fire anyone. Any other public comments? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. You wanted to pull out expenditures?
Yeah, I'd like to move them to, we can move them matters from the floor.
I would say new business.
Okay, and I did wanna ask you, since I do, since we didn't have the hearings yesterday and we canceled the meetings, there's no exception for that since they were?
No, because they have to be published, so once we publish the, like, the grant was at least five days, the selling of the properties is ten days. So, once you publish that date, and if it's postponed or canceled, we can't use that, that's sticky. See what I'm saying? Like, if we published in the newspaper saying it was gonna be at this date and time and we don't hold it and we postpone it, we didn't technically give enough notice to people.
So, there's no emergency clause there, there's nothing?
Not that I could find.
Like, we could've ran it in a paper today or put it out on the website today to have it tonight because of the postponement?
No, because it has to be published in a newspaper circulated in the city.
So, that was taken into consideration?
But that's why we have to have that one meeting.
I know, but that was taken into consideration when we canceled?
Yeah.
Two hearings? Okay. So, we gotta spend double the fees? Okay.
Well, and I, she, she actually said the same thing to me yesterday when I was sitting here after I'd gotten off phone with Tim and we had discussed postponing the meeting. She said that we're gonna have to pay to put it in the paper again, and I said paying to put it in the papers is better than paying for someone's funeral on Nancy Road, so that's where I stand.
And the only reason why I question is I'm a truck driver. Everybody else gets to sit in their cuff, cozy for friggin' hospitals or their cozy rooms, and the truck drivers and the nurses and the doctors are out there doing their jobs, the linemen are out there doing their jobs.
I know.
And I just compare myself a little bit more to the working man than I do the office worker. That's the only reason why I ask.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
So which bills are you actually taking off, though? Are you just taking the whole expenditures off and putting?
I think that's just easiest because I've got about six checks I wanna ask about.
Okay, so moving it under new business?
Yes, please.
Sean, I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
We have roll call, please?
Jansky?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Clem?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
So that'll be B under new business?
So that'll be B under new business. Okay, moving down to reports by departments, committees, and boards, starting with community development report.
Thanks Mayor, Rich Murphy, Community Development Director, uh, have some annual renewals for cannabis operators for twenty-twenty-four, uh, several for you. The first two are for Zen Leaf Buchanan at two-five-nine East Front Street, renewing an adult use and medical, uh, retail license. They have received, uh, the applications and the fees. We have forwarded the, uh, backgrounds to Buchanan Police for their, um, background checks, and I find all paperwork to be in order and recommend approval.
Someone would like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve Zen Leaf Buchanan marijuana permit.
I'll support.
Thank you, can we roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Clem?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Jansky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, uh, next item is Red Bud Roots, uh, twenty-twenty-four renewals. You'll remember that we do Red Bud Roots in two cycles, uh, the majority is now, uh, tonight, five licenses, um, at various, uh, addresses in their corridor of operation. Um, and we have received all the paperwork and the applications, the fees have been posted to our account, uh, we have run the background checks and, uh, to, uh, Buchanan Police Department's satisfaction. My recommendation is approval. Alex from Red Bud Roots, uh, is here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Anybody like to make a motion?
Uh, so I'll move to approve the Red Bud Roots Buchanan marijuana permit renewals as presented.
Thank you, is there support?
This is Money, I'll support.
I just got one question.
Good.
It, it says permit renewals for Zen Leaf, and then you changed it to a resolution for C D B.
Oh, that's for something different.
That's a different one?
That's a typo.
Alright, alright.
Sorry, that was my question.
No, that's fine, I'm just double checking.
Munich, Munich code was, was, she was having trouble with it, with all these red lines and everything, so she just printed it out.
Not a problem, just I wanted to double check.
Okay, so we have, uh, a motion from Swam, did we have a second?
I just, yeah.
Can we roll call, please?
Swam?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Jansky?
Yep.
Money?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is considering a resolution, twenty-twenty-four point oh-one slash oh-four, a resolution for local support without financial commitment for Liv Buchanan application for Michigan Main Streets, and I believe Ashley Regal is going to speak with us with some members of the Liv Buchanan Group.
Good evening, you know, we've been working for this for a while, so we're just coming before you, this is the last step before we submit our application to Main Street, we have everything else ready, um, with your approval tonight, we will submit our application and find out in the next couple of months if we are able to get the designation from this date as a Michigan Main Street.
So, hi, I'm Peter Leacy, I'm with the, uh, Liv Buchanan Group, and I was asked to give a little background on the application. Um, and our president, well, Tracy Dipper was going to present, but she can't get out of the driveway, so, uh, I have the pleasure of filling in for her. Uh, we have several members here, you know, Ashley, Jen Gary, Julie Capron, and Neet Tuitt. And we're part of Liv Buchanan, five-oh-one-C-three nonprofit group that was created to fulfill the commission's twenty-twenty-one plan to get the Michigan Main Street status for downtown Buchanan. Um, that process began when the city hired a Main Street manager, Ashley. In the fall of twenty-twenty-one, uh, Ashley started work, uh, she worked out the organizational structure for the program, and then in the winter of twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, the city and the Chamber of Commerce recruited volunteers and created the board that we're, that are pushing through the application. Every three years, Michigan Economic Development Corporation picks no more than three communities in Michigan and advances them to the select level of the Main Street program. And that's what we're going for now, that's the application that we're submitting. The select level status opens up lots of technical assistance and potentially grant funding for the communities that are selected, so there's a real, um, imperative to try to get that status. Uh, we've worked hard to complete the lengthy and detailed application, um, and at the same time, we've advanced a number of initiatives in Buchanan, like Lunchy Mondays and Hometown and Company, and the Days Avenue Activation and McCoy Creek Trail signage, um, but I won't go into those details here, cause we're talking about the application itself. The application process involves a lot more than just submitting the paper application, and all those projects are ticking off boxes, um, for the, uh, that they're going to consider when they decide on our application. Those projects have also had a significant impact on Buchanan just in these last two years. So, tonight, we're asking the city commission to approve a resolution supporting the application as we get ready to mail it off to Lansing next month. Your resolution of support is necessary to complete the application, it's, it's a requirement, uh, but more fundamentally, it's the logical conclusion to the years of hard work that Ashley and this team of volunteers has done as we're carrying out what the commission asked us to do in twenty-twenty-one. So, we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, I hope, thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Anybody have any questions for Ashley or Peter? Somebody like to make a motion to approve the resolution?
Sean, I'll move to approve resolution twenty-twenty-four dot zero-one slash zero-four, a resolution to support Liv Buchanan application for Michigan Main Street designation as presented.
Thank you, is there support?
This is Money, I'll support.
Thank you, do you have discussion?
Yes. I was very much gonna vote no against this, just because of the way it's gone down, the way it was established, the way it's gone forward, there's no way I can vote no against this because it's absolutely maybe a positive, but I don't see it, and I've reached out to Lansing several times, and I've reached out to several people. I don't like the way it's been run, I don't like the way it's been put together, and I don't like what it's doing. It should be under the chamber, but under the circumstances with the application being filled out, I'm gonna vote yes, but I'm voting yes very reservedly, because I still don't believe this program is what it should be. We shouldn't have abolished the D D A, and I just wanted to make that very clear. This is not, Main Street program should not be something under the city's entity whatsoever, this should've been under the chamber, and we all know that. Thank you.
We have a motion in support, can we roll call, please?
Denison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Jansky?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Deservedly yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you, and thank all of you that are here from Liv Buchanan, appreciate your hard work. Okay, moving down to unfinished business, uh, under appointments, consider appointing Commissioner Larry Money to the Joint Water Sewer Board as one of the city commission representatives, as well as considering Mayor Sean Denison to Buchanan Area Recreation Board as the city commission representative. Someone like to make a motion?
I'd like to open the discussion before the motion. I raised this question at the last meeting, and I got told very mistakenly that we had to do applications, even though this is in a commissioner position. I've been taken off barb three times because I am who I am, and I'm gonna continue to be who I am. I'm more qualified than anybody in this room other than him to be on Water and Sewer, including you, sir, and I got a bigger mouth, and I'm not attached to the bureaucrats. So, I look out for the taxpayers' dollar, and I don't really care if somebody in this room dislikes me, and I have proven that time and time again. And, if the fact of the matter is that Larry and Sean are now on four committees, Mark is on one, and Patrick's on two that he gets paid for, is very disturbing to me. So, make your motions, make your moves, but I still think you're making a big mistake, and I'll get back on the committees in November when you're gone.
Okay, someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve appointing Commissioner Money to the Joint Water Sewer Board and Mayor Denison to the Buchanan Area Recreational Board.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, can we roll call, please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Jansky?
No.
Money?
I'm staying.
You can vote if it's worth it.
Oh. Yes.
Clem?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, moving down to new business, complaint consideration, consideration of the complaint filed against Mayor Sean Denison and vote on whether or not to proceed with a hearing pursuant to the rules and procedure for city commission meetings. On what?
Oh, sorry, my bad, I had it in the wrong spot again.
B's under new business.
Yeah, sorry.
You're fine. Uh, and vote on whether or not to proceed with a hearing pursuant to the rules and procedure for city commission meetings and city code of conduct of ethics. Is there any discussion on this, or would someone like to make a motion to consider?
I really think we should discuss it first, I really think you gentlemen should discuss this, this should not be up to me. The four of you did all of this, the four of you created this, so talk about it on camera, in public, you know? Now's your chance, because no matter what anybody thinks, this commission really screwed up by indefinitely, um, suspending a city manager that would've been here ten or fifteen years. So, I, I would really like for you, because I know you're not gonna vote on this, I would like for the mayor to step aside, not as a commissioner, but as mayor, just to show, you know, that we can go forward with this. But, that's you guys' call, but I would really like for you to discuss it in detail.
I mean, I'll, I'll start, um, been thinking a lot about this since we got the complaint at our, our last meeting, um, and then again, got our packet, uh, last week. And Carla hit a, a key point, I thought, this in her comments, um, the specific statement was the law as she sees it. Every one of these ethics complaints, and I believe now this is the third one, um, we've set it aside and had an attorney opinion put on it, every single one of them. It's disappointing that we have to ask and spend more money on attorney fees to have a memo put together. In this case, I think it's incredibly important we have that opinion because, um, as that's been brought up multiple times, the counsel was sought out prior to the decision on the suspension. Now, that was a conversation directly with the mayor and counsel, um, so we should, if we're gonna make a decision on if it was within the rights of his position, we should have an understanding and memorandum as to why that's the case and why it's not a violation. So, after this discussion, my position will be to recommend the city attorney to review it, and then for us to circle back at the next meeting for discussion. That's my opinion.
I don't need a lawyer's opinion on this, this is charter, we gave the mayor?
Yeah, no, but.
We, no, wait, 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 I got the floor. We gave you the power to contact the attorney, but that doesn't circumvent your power as a commissioner. You should've called an emergency meeting of the five of us before you contacted that mayor to suspend, to contact a lawyer to suspend the city manager. Irregardless if I can prove it, or if I can get you throwed out, it doesn't matter. The gut feeling, the gut feeling, and the conversation that we had on the third, and the people that I knew you talked to before you talked to me, you knew this was wrong, you knew this was wrong, and this was a mutiny, and you threw, you hung the captain on a mayor, on a lawyer's advice.
You keep saying that over and over, but that's not.
It's the truth. What does a lawyer collect? The lawyer collect, we paid him twenty thousand dollars last night.
No, I think where Patrick is going is when, when Tony, what's his last name? When Tony Howser asked to have a hearing about your behavior?
This isn't about me.
No, listen, let me finish, now I have the floor. When he submitted his asking for a hearing, we sent that to the attorney to get their input on how to hold that hearing. When I asked for a hearing to hold you accountable, we sent that to the attorney. I mean, I think this is worthy of sending to the attorney and have them show us how to go forward, I'm not afraid of having a hearing about it, I didn't do anything wrong. I mean, I'm not, I'm, I would love to have a hearing. So, I, I would say, yeah, let's, let's do what we've done on all of the other requests for hearings and move forward.
Why do we have to pay a lawyer to do this? We sit in a position to do this, you don't have to swear in, this is not a court of law.
So, I, I would say the reason is specifically you and I, and without knowing anybody else's opinion, have a disagreement on how that law is perceived.
So, we can agree to disagree. He doesn't feel he's wrong, and I definitely don't feel I'm wrong.
So, d- does that mean if four of us say the law is X, then we're right? I don't think that's the case.
It's not gonna change it, cause I've been trying. If you ask a lawyer, you're not gonna change the law.
No, but I think, I think we, I think we all, um.
We wanna know if it was truly followed.
We respect the city attorneys, maybe the city attorneys are gonna look ahead and say, you know what, Sean, you did it wrong, and whatever.
But how are we gonna undo it? We, you argued when we gave him the power to?
You, we're not going to undo it, she wants to remove me from office.
I know, but you wanted to remove me too. So, I mean, you know, let's read between the lines. You argued with me about giving him power to contact the lawyer, remember? That was a very specific discussion. And I argued that somebody had to have the power to contact the lawyer.
Sure.
Never in a million years did I think he would circumvent the power of the commission. He is just a commissioner, and he went way over and above.
So, I don't think this is a, a can, uh, complaint or situation where we're talking about undoing something, what's been done is done, this is about, was it done correctly? And making sure we do it correctly if it ever happens again, and that's it, there's no going backwards.
Are you ever gonna think that he did it incorrectly? Are you ever gonna admit he did it incorrectly?
I need to understand the opinion of law.
Exactly, and I think to that point, and that's a valid point, is that the exact same thing was given a courtesy to you to have that law followed based on the lawyer's opinion, it didn't mean that he was right or wrong, it was just the correct process that had to be followed.
It was a dog and pony show and we paid how much for the lawyer?
So is this, let's be honest.
It is, but it's how the law works.
Exactly, so let's do the exact same.
You called me out.
So, let's do the exact same thing for me that we did for you.
I'm trying to cir, I, I don't wanna pay the lawyer, cause I think we can have a hearing without a lawyer hearing.
I don't wanna pay the lawyer, I wish people would quit saying crazy things about me that aren't true.
Well, read the charter, sir.
Dan, I don't think you're more qualified than an attorney to interpret the law, and that's just my stake.
I'm reading the charter, and the lawyer didn't interpret the charter, I'm sorry. I've got lawyers telling me that he didn't interpret the charter, and whether he give the advice?
But we don't have lawyers telling us that, though.
Then you're asking the wrong people, don't just ask the two hundred.
Or you wanna ask the right people until you get the answer you want, is that?
No, you're paying a guy two-hundred-and-fifty dollars an hour that makes his living by telling you BS. If anybody's ever dealt with a lawyer, how do they make their living? By stringing you along, trying to get divorced sometime and find out how much it costs. No, it's true.
Dan, if that's the case, that, that.
So, you're saying your lawyers are BS.
Yeah, that's.
They all are, it doesn't matter.
So, now that we established your lawyer's stringing you along, you think our lawyer's stringing us along, can we?
Have you ever hired a lawyer that doesn't try to charge you more by stringing you along in what he's doing?
I have a trust in my attorney, which is why I pay them what I pay them, and if I didn't trust him, then I would find a new one.
I feel bad for you, cause someday they're gonna really burn you.
Okay, um, someone like to make a motion then to move forward at some, somehow?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make a motion to refer this to city council, um, for a written review and memo to be provided to the commission for discussion at the next commission meeting, uh, do you think that's sufficient amount of time? If not, then we'll be ready, we can go forward.
I think the last, that's, it only took the two weeks, the last time we had to do that.
I don't wanna pay a lawyer, I don't wanna pay a lawyer extortion amounts of money, we don't have to have two attorneys.
I don't either.
Point of order, we do have a motion on the floor, right?
Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you.
Now, discussion.
Now discussion.
I don't want to have the kinda hearing that you had on me. You know, we both found out that truth, facts are not truth. Facts are just some BS somebody coughs up.
No, exactly, like, like.
Isn't that the truth?
Oh, it absolutely is the truth. It's just like the facts that you coughed up to the Marion County Sheriff's Office about me.
Exactly.
That half of Carla's complaints are, they're actually from you.
Right.
To the Marion County Sheriff's Office.
That's the open meetings act violations.
There are no violations because the prosecutor says it's not a violation.
The prosecuting, but we don't know what the Attorney General is gonna say because it's not over and you're in Marion County.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to the Attorney General.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Open Harris.
Thank you.
I wanna make one more point. The Attorney General won't take my open meetings act violations from me. I have to get a, a state representative or a state senator and I'm working on that.
Well, good luck with that because there was no open meetings act violations.
Well, see, you made all.
We're allowed to be in the same.
You made all indecisions on your own.
That's not what your violation was about. It was, no, it wasn't. It was about them being at my recall hearing. You said Mark Weeden was there, he wasn't even in the building.
See, and that wasn't the only one, there was two other complaints.
Point of order, can we continue with the agenda, everybody?
And the DA only went with the easiest one.
Yeah, please, sorry. Okay, moving down to item B, the expenditures that you'd like to discuss. Please point out the checks you have questions about. We're on your expenditures that you'd like to move. Would you like to speak about them?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about all the bogus BS that's been going on down here and it's not gonna get any better. And I'm not going nowhere. Um, twenty thousand dollars for the lawyer, Tim. Can you break that down for us a little bit or give us some idea? You broke it down here a little bit. Three of them are legal fees and one of them is for thirty-four hundred dollars to USDA. I just want clarification.
USDA, uh, commission and city manager expenses and FOIA.
The FOIAs were eighty-two hundred and five dollars.
So why are we sending FOIAs to lawyers?
There were some legal questions regarding the executing of the FOIAs.
I, I'd like to point out that I don't know how many FOIA requests you have right now, but our city clerk is super loaded with election issues that she's having to deal with. It changed daily from the state and she's drowning in FOIA requests, thousands of pages of FOIA requests. Um, a good portion of that attorney's bill was for the USDA project downtown. They were working on the easements, they were wrapping that up, that's complete now. Um, the other portion of it, I believe, um, the city attorney was working with, um, Tim Gainis on some. Issues that they had through, you know, some calls that they had or something, um, and then I'm trying to think what the other portion of that was for. I don't remember, so I don't have the bill in front of me, but, um, the largest portion was because of these FOIAs that, um, people keep sending in thinking they're gonna find something. Um, and, and they're taking up, um, a ton of our, the city clerk's time and, and they're costing the city money.
The other one is the four thousand dollars that we spent to lease a piece of equipment to operate a piece of equipment. Um, this commission authorized buying a baler. This commission did ask if we had a piece of equipment to pull said baler. He's no longer a commissioner, but he did ask. And the answer was yes, but sometimes, you know, he might have had an idea, he just didn't say that we, we specifically didn't own this piece of equipment. I just wanted to explain that we're spending four thousand dollars to pull a baler around town. Um, I guess I'm not really asking anything from you, but since I wanted to ask about the lawyer, I figured I might as well go all out. We spent seventeen hundred dollars on, um, road patch. Don't we have a cold patch machine that we can do that ourselves or is it just the fact that Reese Riley has a cold patch? Do you know?
I have to buy the cold patch to go on the machine. It doesn't make them cold patch, we have to put the stuff in the machine.
So the seventeen hundred dollars was for cold patch?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know, Mike. And then, um. Thank you. I mean, I don't dare call any of you guys because I'm harassing or attacking you, so you're gonna have to answer, you're gonna have to answer my questions in a public space. Because I attack employees.
I do think the appropriate, I mean, more.
Cause I attack employees, you've accused me of it numerous times.
I was starting to say, I think the appropriate channel to get those questions asked, not that you can't ask them, is through the city manager.
And I have, I talked to him today and I wanted to make it public because I wanted to make it very public how much trouble I have.
So you got your answers.
And I'm not getting any, I'm not having any problems with Tim.
Great, I hope you don't. So you got your answers, your intention was to publicly embarrass who now? Is that the goal there? If you had your answers.
Public embarrass who?
That's what I'm asking, the point of that.
The point is to make it public what we're spending money on because the general public doesn't read this.
Mm-hmm, okay, that's fine.
And then I ask you about the plaques. I'm just curious as to what they're for. They were four hundred dollar plaques.
For cemetery plaques, can you help me out on that one, Mike?
Were they the Legion plaques?
Um, that's what I'm assuming is they were Legion plaques.
So the memorial plaques?
Memorial plaques.
See, he's right here. Does Legion buy them?
I would have to pull the invoice.
I reviewed the bills, Dan, but I can't tell you.
No, that's fine.
They're related to the cemetery.
I would have to say that I don't know why the city is being charged for that. If that's a plaque, uh, as like a grave marker. Is that the plaque we're talking about?
I, I'm, I, I have no idea.
It might be for the columbariums, another thing.
Uh.
The plaques when he orders.
I'll find out for you.
That, that goes through, that goes through the Legion, or that goes through the funeral home, not the, not the city. The only thing, the only thing that the, you know, the city. Supplies out there are the, uh, uh, markers, uh, for the flags. The flag, um, I can't even.
Dan, do you have a invoice number handy just so we can mark it?
Um, two seven six six five.
Thank you.
And it goes all the way to six six seven.
Through Cold Spring, so that for our columbariums, not the Legion columbariums, the regular columbariums. When, once a person passes or purchases, they get the Cold Spring plaques to go onto the columbariums.
Okay.
So it's included with their, when they already paid for that already, it goes through the, what is that fund called? The tr-, not trust and agency, what am I thinking of? The, what is it called? The perpetual care fund?
The perpetual fund.
There it is. So it's already paid for and it goes into that fund, so when the time of death, they have that already paid for.
All right, and then there's only two other checks for propane for the cemetery building and that's because we don't have a DPW. And as far, as far as embarrassing people, when you do that and everybody laughs and congratulates you, congratulations to you. Because I just found twelve hundred dollars, sir, because all I'm doing is clarifying questions and you wanna be to be nice, you need to be nice too.
Okay, any more discussion on the expenditures?
No.
The propane for the cemetery is for the DTR buildings that they have.
It's an uninsulated building though, right?
Half of it is insulated, it's closed off and they have to have that, there's a bathroom in there.
Thank you.
Okay, moving down to communication.
Can you, um, make a motion to.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll still move. I'll second.
Thank you, can I roll call?
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Oh, there was one other one.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Go for it.
Weeden?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes. There was a drone, four hundred dollars. I forgot all about the drone. Four hundred dollars for a drone for private property to put on our website.
Is there a four hundred dollar bill for a drone?
Do you have the?
Video marketing.
The video?
To pay it for it to have completed, correct?
What are we getting for that? I mean, that's the real question. What are we getting for that? You know, and I'll just leave it at that, four hundred dollars. What are we getting for it?
I actually, I, I think.
It was, it was the, it was the acreage that's private property owned by Tim Moore. Why are we advertising that?
It's called economic development. I know you don't get it, but that's what it's called.
Why are you, you know, you really want me to go?
Because, because I'm more capable.
I'm very capable of being sarcastic.
You're really.
You're not as capable to be sitting in that chair.
Yes, I am.
Hey, Dan.
You don't have the right to say I don't have the right to sit in this chair, no more than you, so knock it off, sir.
I just say you don't have the right.
I'll take that gavel away from you, just take it away from you.
Hey, Dan.
But the thing about it is economic development, there was two opportunities to develop the property on the hill by the railroad tracks. We missed them both times. They're leaving town now. He was a former employer of yours. Mr. Dickerson is moving out of town.
They got like five hundred thousand dollars in incentives from the state of Indiana, which is a different state, by the way, to move to El Carte.
Well, you know, if you called your commissioners and you filled your commissioners in, we might know that, but you don't talk to me because I don't get along with you very well. Because you don't like the questions I ask you because you don't have the answers when I ask the questions.
So in response to your four hundred dollars for the drone and what's the purpose of it, what'd be interesting is if Rich, you take that back and look what the pull-through success is on sales versus paper. Online communication and videography, right? You don't have to speak on it now. I'm saying that those are the kinda things that I, that if, if. It would be a good response to your question, say, why did we spend four hundred dollars? And if the pull-through sales on a drone video for a sale of a property. Is X amount more, I know we have realtors in the room, guarantee this success rate is much higher. This is the world we live in today. So I agree, four hundred dollars doesn't seem excessive, but if the pull-through is two thousand for the hundred thou-, three hundred thousand, that's all I'm saying, Dan, is that. It's negligible. It, you, it may laugh at it, but it's negligible.
No, I'm not arguing that point.
Right.
But that's all I'm getting and that's all I've gotten for three years down here.
Right.
You know, we're not getting any results.
Right.
I mean, we brag about our food trucks and we brag about our.
Right.
Incubator and what's that doing for the city really?
Agreed, and that's why I'm continuing on with your point that if they provide the pull-through sales, then you can go, okay, that makes sense. That's been four hundred dollars every time if the success rate is eighty-five percent.
But we're not seeing that.
We may not, but we can't, hang on, we can't, if we don't spend, sorry, Sean, if we don't spend the four hundred dollars and if justified by the percentage of sales that can document it based on drone footage. I think then you'd have your answer, that's all. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying it's a.
Well, I've only got a few years to live and I'd like to see it happen and I've been down here nine years already.
I agree.
All right?
Yeah.
And I don't see where it's gonna happen the way it's going, irregardless of what the dream is down.
Agreed, but if we continue to do the same thing, we're gonna get the same results. So let's say that we spend four hundred dollars and the end result is we sell it. Are you gonna be upset then? Not upset, but questioning the four hundred dollars.
Helping a physical sell his property that he hasn't done anything to sell for ten years?
We can do theoretic all night, but the reality is, is if the four hundred dollars nets a sale.
Why aren't we doing it for the moose? The moose is way more economic, more economically developed, except for housing, you know? I mean, there's always a why.
Right.
And all we do is concentrate on Days Avenue. We've always just, just Days Avenue, the food trucks on Days Avenue. No, I don't want, no.
Valid questions, right? But at the same time, if it's just the four hundred dollars, I think getting justification for it was good, but then the additional question should have been, what is the net result? And if there's no net result, then what's the purpose of it?
How many times have we done this, Mark?
Ask different questions, you get different answers.
Well, exactly.
It could be asked a different way.
And I get told by our mayor, I don't even have the right to sit in this chair and he wants me to be nice to him.
That's a topic for another day.
Well, yeah, it's gonna continue on too.
Any more communications? Public comment on non-agenda items. If anyone would like to make a public comment on a non-agenda item, please make your ready podium, state your name for the minutes.
My name is Terry Sulak. I live at thirty-two oh nine Niles Buchanan Road. Um. I am worried about the traffic by high profile. The night before Christmas Eve, we went to Dollar General to finish up our Christmas shopping. And we pulled into the handicap parking, we couldn't get out. There was traffic from high profile down to where Hilltop was. Um, it was everywhere. There was McDonald's was blocked off, you couldn't get into, uh, Dollar General. The police, if there was an emergency, they couldn't have got out to be there. I would like to see something done because this is not the first time. You know, can they get parking in the back and how many more pot shops do we need? We're gonna have to rename this town Buchananus. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Monroly May, one eighteen Shermer Parkway. Good evening, Commissioners. Um, I wanna talk about FOIAs. Um. In two thousand and ten, I was nicknamed the FOIA Queen. And the reason I was nicknamed that is because we had a city manager who was embezzling money and doing some things that were really questionable. And it took me many, many FOIAs to finally prove that whatever I was saying was correct. It did not cost eight thousand dollars. I'm telling you that eight thousand dollars at two hundred and fifty dollars an hour is thirty-two hours. I don't think two hundred and thirty is a lot for a lawyer, not around here, that's what they take. But the fact that he takes so long to get something done may be more questionable about the attorney that we have. Because most attorneys, and I know that definitely Cots does, they have a lot of li-, paralegals that help them do that work. So I don't know how we can justify eight thousand dollars for FOIA. Now, back to the FOIA, I spoke to Tim and there are a lot of things that I have questions for that I would rather not FOIA. Cause it does take time to FOIA and it bothers her, it bothers everyone. If we can come into the office and look at the files that you feel are not FOIable or not. Have nothing to do with staff or anything like that, we would be happy to come in and do that. I can't speak for everybody, but I know I would. I'd much rather sit there and look at the paperwork to try and figure out what it is that I'm looking for. Um, and what it is that is, that, that, that will answer my questions regarding certain things in this community. So if that's possible, we would definitely take that route. I would definitely take that route and save us a lot of money. But eight thousand dollars for FOIAs, I know how many FOIAs you've had, I gave you three of them and they didn't, I did not need a lawyer to get this. But I know it has to go through the lawyer because that's the law. So if it goes to the lawyer and he says, yes, you can give them that, that should not cost you more than an hour of him to say that. So please be honest with us and find out why the lawyer is charging you eight thousand dollars for FOIA. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment? Okay, seen none. Let's move down to city manager comments.
Okay, it's great to see so many familiar faces here. I'm looking forward to great things here in the city of Buchanan. We are currently wrapping up our financial audit for submission to the state next week. And I'm working with Mike Baker in submitting a grant application to Eagle, seeking funding for technical, managerial and financial support for lead service line replacement. Well, we're kinda practicing together trying to get this grant application out and hopefully we'll be successful. And it's due at the end of the month, so we're working on that and there are no local matching funds required.
On tha-, on that note, just a question. I know we had talked one time about how many lead service lines that were still needed to be fixed. Do you, do you know that number?
I do not know that number, but we're gonna know when we submit our application next week.
Okay, going down to Commissioner Cummins, Mr. Weeden?
Thanks, Sean. Uh, first of all, Dan, thank you for bringing up the questions about the checks and about the expenditures. Uh, I think that is something that the public needs to be aware of. It is something that is easily passed over, easily forgotten about. And, and to Monroe's point, uh, there were some unethical things happening in two thousand and ten and it did become a FOIA issue, uh, and they uncovered it and so on and so forth. So I don't think it's unusual for somebody to do that and, and Dan may have a delivery that doesn't sound like it's going to be, uh, calm and, and reasonable. But he has questions that you guys need to hear and, and answers that you need to get. So there's nothing wrong with that. And so, thank you, Dan, that's all I wanna say for bringing that up. Number two, it's very interesting when we get to FOIAs because you immediately think, oh, gosh, what do I have? What do, what do I need to find? And then I look at what the request is and the majority of the time, there's none. And it's interesting because I know they're trying to find something. Doesn't mean anything is there, they want answers. But when you get the requests, it's very interesting. The first thing I get to email back to Carla is, no, no documentation. Not because of any fear of somebody finding something out or uncovering some kinda mystery or, you know, secretive thing that's happening within the society they're creating. That it doesn't exist. So the FOIAs only happen because people think there's something to uncover. In five years, I've seen multiple and it is very interesting and. And interesting to me to send those in and wonder what is it that they're thinking they're gonna find when I get to have the luxury of saying none? And, and that's wonderful, that's what it should. And, and that's wonderful, that's what it should be, that means that we're being transparent, that means that the information they're requesting doesn't exist, good, bad, or indifferent, right? So, I thank you for those, because it does prove that things are being done correctly.
Mr. Swam?
Yeah, so I had FOIA on my list of topics to chat about tonight as well, I mean, just as we talked about at the beginning, I mean, it puts a ton on the city hall staff, and if we're trying to be efficient with our time, and what we're spending taxpayer dollars on, you know, just keep in mind, it takes a lot off of them to do all that work, and half the time, I know, much like Mark's responses, my response is, there's no documents associated with that, um, there's no communication associated with that. So, I do, it kinda hurts my heart to see what, what people think is going on that's really not going on, and it is what it is, and we're still, we have to write checks to pay for those bills, but we'll see, I guess I don't have anything else to say on FOIA. High profile piece, Terry, um, I agree with you, I hope our team's been having that conversation, and, because that, that was, uh, not a great event, or not a great day for the community, and there was a lot of Facebook advertisement, things like that on that, so it didn't put us in the best light. And then, uh, I read a news story that was once again shared by some individuals in this community, uh, put out there by WSBT, I'm really disappointed in it, actually, that said, uh, four commissioners were trying to remove the mayor, which is not a true statement at all. So I, the news is gonna be down here, you know, my expectation out of you is factual reporting, you have an ethical standard to do that. Don't misquote me when you have everything on video, and go look at it, do your research. You have to do better than that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bianski.
Well, with that being said, I wanna thank all you guys in the media, because you've been doing a damn good job, I just wish you'd do a little more investigative reporting. You've been quoting me quite well, and you'd have to backtrack, because things have been said, that you've had to backtrack, because things have been said down here. And as far as, you know, embarrassing people, I have a high expectation of people earning their paychecks, and when I don't, you know, I have a city manager, I had a city manager, I've got a good city manager now. Was he put in that seat right, correctly? No, he was not. He understands that, according to your charter, and you guys wanna think that you can do what you wanna do, but you wanna, you wanna shout me down and act pompous? I mean, just sitting there, you look pompous, and then telling me that I'm not, shouldn't even be sitting in this chair.
You're not trying to embarrass anybody, though, right?
No. But he sits there, and he's pompous. I don't care, he's pompous as hell, you know? But the thing about it is, is you voted, I voted you in, I won't vote for him, you know? But you catered to him, and you couldn't stand him three years ago, you wanted to deal with him, but none of that's ever said. And, uh, this is your politics, folks, this is what your politics really are, and whether you like them or not, we're not catering, I'm not gonna cater to the carpetbaggers, the shysters, or the snake oil salesmen, and you still have them in this town. And this town has spent a hundred years trying to get ahead of itself, and it hasn't. It brought Clarks to town, and then it laid down, and it's laid down ever since. We brought marijuana into town, and all anybody can do is bitch about it. It shot life into town. We haven't dealt with it well, in some ways. The antique dealers come into town, everybody complains that they're only open on the weekends, because they don't cater to the locals, but they still bring money and business into town. So you need to wrap your arms around the businesses, because the locals have never, including Clark Equipment, going that far back. Clark Equipment was a great enabler, it was a sugar daddy, and when it got tired of being a sugar daddy, it left. So, that being said, and I love this city, I've lived in this city twice, I moved out, and I moved back. So I love this city, and I'm looking out for your dollars, every one of your dollars, non-stop, because nothing else matters but your dollars. Thank you.
Mr. Money?
Well, on a brighter note, thank you Cory, and thank you Jason for the work you did, it's well deserved. Enough can't be said for the police department that we have here, that, uh, supposedly we wanted out of here, but that was never the case. And I'm quite sure that the people that are here really appreciate what you do for this city. And to include Harvey and Tim Ganas back there. Uh, thanks to Mike Baker and his crew for keeping our city streets clean, I seen there was a lot of. A lot of stuff on Facebook, you know, and we all know how that goes, because social media is the grace of Buchanan, and, you know, they wanna complain that you didn't get somebody's alley, or whatever, but, uh, I see you folks going out there, I see you doing a lot of good stuff. I'm quite sure that the city of Bu- or the citizens of Buchanan, other than a few, which probably don't even live in the city of Buchanan.
What you don't say. You don't say, Terry.
Pardon me?
There's people outside of the city?
Yeah, yes.
Interesting.
But we are all city voters, so, um, anyway, um, once again, we don't need to talk about the FOIA information, it is what it is, we'll all take care of that as we see fit. Thank you to this commission, once again, for doing all of the hard work that, uh, they put in. Thank you to our, uh, our staff out there, that put in a lot of hours, and welcome aboard, Tim, it's good to have you back. We hope you don't resign.
It's good to be back.
All right.
Tim, it is good to have you back, by the way. Um, I too wanted to thank Officer Reed and Officer Cullum. Those kinda things are the reasons that, um, you news organizations should be here following, because those are the stories you should be watching. That along with the other great things that happened in this town, like, um, the huge numbers of volunteers we have at the Scarecrow Charities, um, and the Trail Friends, and, you know, Ram Love, there's so many good things that you could be reporting on, but you only show up, um, when we seem to be yelling at one another, unfortunately. If, if you can drive through this town and not tell that there's economic development happening, you're driving through town with your eyes closed, because there is so much stuff happening in this town, it's remarkable. And it's due to the hard work of people like Ashley, and Rich, and Julie, and Antu, and Peter Leacy, and Rich Martin, and it goes on and on and on and on. There's a ton of people working to do good in this town, and it's working. And it's only gonna get better. Because as Peter mentioned in his statement, once we get the main street designation, it opens the doors to enormous amounts of funds and information, and, you know, you get to work with other people who are doing the same things, and you get to find what works in their neighborhoods, and in their cities, and it's worth all the effort you've put in. Thank you. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Thank you, there's support.
Mr. Money, I'll support.
May I roll call, please?
Swam?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Your turn.
Uh, they, they used to do them. They used to do CBR classes.
It's not mandatory, or they don't get it.